All right, we're at seven. And hopefully Mike makes here and just get started.
Seven?
We'll start the meeting with our pledge of allegiance. All right, um, just like doing some of the meeting prep work. Curious from the rest of the planning commission, based on time, I'm anticipating the first agenda item will take a little bit longer than the second one. Would anyone want to make a motion that we reorder? Just start with the second agenda item. Thanks, Rich. One second. All right, thank you, Jason. All right, all those in favor of switching the agenda items around, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, so if you're okay, you have applicant number two, you can come on up. And let's do quick roll call here. Well, you can hang tight right by the applicant side. Um, we got a couple other things to go through before we get to that. So real quick, uh, roll call of... Well, we'll do that too. But first, we're going to just do a roll call of members that are here because they are missing right now. So District One? All right, thank you, Jason. District Two? Thank you, Sean. I am representing District Three, Jason Crone. District Four? Thank you, Ken. Rich, uh, sorry, District Five, Mike, is not here yet. He'll join us shortly. Uh, we have two out large members, Rich Bunkish. Thank you, and... All right, and then we have our county commissioner, representative here, Joe Percy. Thank you, Joe. All right, now that will introduce agenda item number two. Uh, and that is to consider a rezoning request submitted by Jason and Jill Beck of Kimball, according to section 4.1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance under 439, to rezone approximately 2.4 acres from residential R5, uh, district, to the R10 zoning district, and then rezoning, uh, a different 2.4 acres from the R10 zoning district, uh, to an R5 zoning district. Properties located, um, in the property, this is repair of Lot One, Lot Two, Cedar Prairie, lying at the end of Badger Road, in section 206 of Main Prairie Township. The property addresses are 14175 and 14181, Badger Road, Kimball. So real quickly now, members who visited the site. Jason? Uh, Sean?
Yes.
I also did, uh, in the past this time. Can we add?
I'm with you. I've been there two or three times, so I didn't go back.
Perfect. Uh, Rich?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Good.
Are... You'd not, okay.
I did.
Oh, did.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So with that, um, Jennifer, uh, could you kind of take us through the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Commission members. So, uh, as Jason introduced, this is a rezoning request. Essentially, what they would like to do is swap R5 and R10 zoning between the two lots. And that's drawn out in your packets there on the maps. Just a little bit of background, um, this looks familiar to you because the property, the lot to the north was rezoned from R10 and R5 back in March. And then upon getting, digging into starting the plat process, they realized there wasn't room in that lot that was rezoned to accommodate a second building site due to the lake setback. So what they would like to do is modify how the zoning looks between their two properties there. So that Northern Lot is R5 that was done in March. And then the blue would also become R5, where the green will become R10. So that would be their, uh, request, to change the zoning in that manner. So you are familiar with where the property is in Main Prairie Township, school, section eight. As far as, um, one new thing to point out now, lot? Let's see, the Southern Lot is registered, it's R10. So they're allowed to have some animal units. They're registered for four animal units, they have an interim use permit for that. If this rezoning goes through and part of their lot becomes R5, they'll have to drop an animal unit. So, um... It's a little tricky. But if the rezoning's approved and then they replat their lot with their home to include the green, then they're okay and they're back to four animal units. So there's just a little bit of a lapse there between the rezoning and the plat being moved. Um, what our suggestion is, is take the planning commission recommendation. If it is to recommend approval, uh, we would hold off going to the county board with the final approval until the plat's ready to be recorded. That way, it gets, the rezoning gets recorded with the plat and then their animal units stay okay the whole time. Um, the Bex are aware of that and have, um, signed a waiver of the 60-day rule so that we can have that time built in there, um, if the planning commission recommends approval. So we'll see how that goes. Um, so anyway, you guys are familiar with the area. Um, it's residential, kind of lake shore residential in the area, and then to the west is more ag land. The zoning in this area is a mixture. If we can go to the zoning map, uh, ag and residential in this area. There you go. So if the rezoning's approved, they, between the two lots, they're hoping to gain a third lot. Is it probably about all that would happen? I don't know if they'd get more than that. One more, maybe two, but they'll know more once they get into the surveying. Uh, Main Prairie Township did review this and they recommended approval. And, um, that's all I have for the staff report, and then I just had one email from the public.
All right, very good. Well, with that, Jill, you want to introduce yourself? And you can stay wherever you're more comfortable. You can stay seated or you can stand up, that's cool. And then just state your name and address, so we have it on the record.
Okay, yep, I'm Jill Beck, and the address is 14175, uh, Drew Road, Kimball.
Right, very good, Jill. Anything that you'd like to add to Jennifer's report?
Um, I don't think so. I think, I'm, I'm wondering if the only advantage of this, so that that one animal unit would be retained, one addition.
That, that would be the reason for delaying the final approval at board, would be to retain the four animal units. If we, um, want to go to board sooner, you'd have to sign paperwork to reduce your animal units to three.
Okay. So then the other question I have is, um, you know, if we wanted to build on that eastern lot, once we would, you know, possibly separate them, if that green striped area is added to our home ten, R10, would there be enough land still to have a building spot on that anymore? I, I didn't think of it until just as I'm standing here thinking, by swapping that, um, are we losing a possibility of a lot that would have a building location on that eastern lot?
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, you sure can.
Um, so the green area would no longer be eligible to be built on for a home. It could certainly be part of a new lot, but it couldn't have a home there if it's R10.
Right, because it would kind of be just attached to our, R10 home, right?
Or, or it could become part of a different lot. If you don't want, if you're not worried about the animal units, you supply the green into a different lot, um, it just can't have a home in that space.
Okay. Mm-hmm. I mean, it looks...
But it could only be articulated with the other two lots, is that correct though? Only to, only to the west and to the north?
Yep, correct.
So is there enough, enough north of that green striped land to have a building location farm from the lake setback?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
That's a great question. And when you described the area to swap and then, um, you know, you were communicating with Heidi on it, um, the thought was that you knew how much it needed to build a builder?
Well, it was because we were going to split it and so that that western lot wouldn't have had enough. Um, Mr. Crone helped us with kind of seeing that there wasn't going to be a buildable location on that western... You know, if you were to, if you were to draw a line straight up, um, but, yep, right, straight there, straight up, and say that, um, kind of, I'm sorry, to the, the eastern line of the pond, basically. Straight down, right there, yeah. So if that, to the left, where the pond is and everything, there wasn't enough space to build a home or a buildable spot. So that's why we had to add that, um, yep, the blue stripes on. So we were considering drawing that line, you know, somewhere around that, where you did that vertical line. But if we take that green striped space, will that, will that lot be even buildable anymore? To the east?
Right. So you're saying would this lot be built?
Right, to the south that, I mean...
Okay, Jill, uh, I'll throw this out there. No, that's okay.
Okay.
An option for you would be to continue this if you want and, and get that figured out. It would...
Yeah, I'm...
To make a decision.
Even come to me until I was just thinking, oh.
That, that happens. If, if you'd like, we could, uh, vote to continue this and, and you could do the research and...
Okay.
Come back.
Okay, so I would, would I have to redo the whole?
You need to have to redo the application, that's the part of continuing. We could just continue it to a future meeting and then you could do that research.
I'm sorry, I just...
That's okay.
I don't want to do it wrong and then come back for another week.
That's, that's why I suggested it. So, uh, with that, I think we just make a motion to continue it. All right. Motion made by Jeff, second by Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so a motion to continue to a future meeting has been made.
I'm sorry to take your time.
Oh, no, don't worry. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Well, that will then take us to agenda item number one. Um, and...
Mr. Chair, just on this item, I have a potential perception of conflict of interest, so I'm going to sit this one out.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jason. All right, so with that, I'll introduce agenda item number one, and that's to consider a plat entitled Hidden Cove Sheds, submitted by, uh, Rhonda Green of Cold Spring, consisting of six lots, one residential lot and five non-residential lots. In accordance with Stearns County Subdivision Ordinance Number 230 and Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, the proposed plat is 17.39 acres and is Lot Two, Block One of Shremle addition in section 28 of Collegeville Township. The property lies west of County Road 50, east of Hidden Cove Road, and north of 271st Street. The property address is 27257 of County Road 50 in Cold Spring. Um, real quickly, uh, roll call of members who visited the site, uh, with Jason, uh, standing, uh, Sean?
Yes.
I also did, um, Ken? Mike's still not here? Haha, Rich?
Yes, I was there.
And Jeff?
Yes.
All right, Jill? Okay, very good. Um, with that, um, Jennifer, if you want to take the staff report?
Sure. Yep. So this property is zoned agricultural 40, and it's less than 40 acres, so 17 acres total. So they just have the one building entitlement, when there's a home out there. So this new plat, proposed plat, would not add any homes out there, but what the proposal is, is that each of the five new lots would be allowed to have an accessory structure on it. And... Let's see. So septic sites were identified for Lot Three, that's the lot with the home. Then the other lots do not have septic sites identified, um, and we're proposing that they wouldn't be allowed to have, um, a holding tank or a septic system, I'll get to that. Setbacks are all shown on the drawing, so there's room on each lot for an accessory structure. There are wetlands out there, um, wetlands have been delineated. That was approved in April, and so... Okay. What? Oh, am I too close? All right. Let's see. Okay, so there's wetlands within the plat, and, um, so all the wetlands are here, setback for building. They're all 25-foot setback except the one where, um, Shelley has the cursor. That wetland, uh, is a different type and that requires a 50-foot setback. Oh, yeah, sorry, that one. That one, that one, 50-foot setback. All the others are 25-foot. For structure. Let's see, um... The property is registered for a maximum of 9.9 animal units right now. Similar to the last item we talked about, if they're going to drop that building site down to six acres, then the animal units is going to have to drop. Now they allow three animal units. Um, when I spoke with the property owner about that, she's fine with that. She'll need to sign a form before final plat approval that will reduce the registration to three animal units. Um, all the lots, all the new lots have access from the township road, and it's either 271st Street or Hidden Cove Road. County Highway Department did review the request and all those lots will be required to access from the township road and not County Road. Um, stormwater management, county zoning ordinance does not require stormwater management plan because this project is an acre of impervious. Um, easements? Let's see, okay, so there's a couple of existing easements out there which are shown on the plat. Um, let's see. Okay, so then I'm going to talk about drainage and utility easements. Um, the ordinance requires drainage and utility easements along the roads, minimum 10 feet. Um, as we do with how major plans we send them to the utility company, Stearns Electric did reply to us after the planning committee, and they are recommending easements on the side lot lines as well. And that email was included in your packets. Um, if staff were, I mean, it's right, if planning commission does recommend those easements on the side property lines, we would suggest they be 6 feet on either side and it would be a total of 12 feet. Um, okay, so, uh, here in the south part on the standpipe, there's a standpipe, um, sort of right on the road right of ways slash property line of Lot Three. And, um, that was constructed years ago by the community, and, um, Shelley can touch on that when I'm done with my, I, with my part here because she has been involved in that since its inception. So... Back and forth, yep. Okay. Um, Collegeville Township did review and approve the plat. That was included. And then I sent you also their township planning commission minutes. I emailed those to you, um, and if you want to discuss them, I'll let me know. Okay, so this did go to plating committee, plating committee recommended approval. If the planning commission were to recommend approval, we do have a list of conditions which suggest. And I'll go through them, try to be brief. So we would have the declaration of restriction protecting the septic sites on Lot Three. And then we'd have a subdivision agreement. Now, I would like to touch on, I would like to try and quickly go through the revised subdivision agreement that we are suggesting for consideration. Um, I emailed that to you, we also had it laying in your spot there at the table. So this is, um, more, more in-depth than what plating committee suggested, um, due to stuff that's been brought up in the last, you know, two days. So, number one, in this subdivision agreement, would be a requirement to use construction sites as management practices in building. Number two, regarding septic, um, on Lot Three, those sites they identified would be protected for septic use. And then water using devices and septic systems are prohibited on lots one, two, four, five, and six, unless otherwise allowed, right in five, the below. We'd have a provision about lighting. The outdoor lighting should be hooded, not fast, light beyond property lines, as in by with the zoning ordinance. In regards to wetlands, um, a statement that a wetland designation should be done before they issue any permits out there. You need wetlands to help us ensure those setbacks in the lot. Um, B, a wetland delineation should have been approved for the property. It's valid for five years on the date of approval. C, suggesting a 25-foot buffer required around all delineated wetlands. Vegetation removal, including removal of trees, shrubs, grasses, and any ground covers prohibited within the buffer. Okay, and then number five, adjustments land use on the property. Lots one, two, four, five, and six will be limited to an accessory structure, antennae, um, essential services, fences, licensed motor vehicle, recreational vehicle or watercraft, uh, outdoor recreation, private screen tools, solar accessory, and a garden, intellible acres, not exceed 10,890 square. That's a quarter acre which is what the township had used. And then all other uses and structures are prohibited. Letter B, lots one, two, four, five, and six do not have a dwelling unless it's rezoned to allow for the building. And if that were to occur, then they'd have to identify their septic sites through a water test, okay, at parquet.
Jennifer, I may interrupt. Uh, do they meet the specifications to be allowed to be?
Yes. Um, they do, if they were to obtain a building, yeah, through a rezoning. Letter C, Lot Three is limited to gardening, intellible acres, not exceed 10,890 square feet. D, accessory structures are limited to 1,800 square feet, with a maximum total height of 14 feet and a maximum building height of 22 feet unless otherwise allowed by the zoning ordinance. And we say unless animal is allowed to cover the case of ordinance changes. If that table of accessory building size were to change for some reason in the future, then the subdivision agreement will follow the change. E, no more than 7,000 square feet of impervious is allowed per lot. So right now, they could have an 1,800 square foot building, but then they could not exceed 7,000 square feet impervious. That would include a driveway, if they wanted a little basket or whatever. Unless stormwater management has implemented in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Letter F, geographic alteration shall comply with the zoning ordinance. And then letters notice that the plat is in an ag area subject to sites, zones, and conditions of modern agriculture. Um, and there are a few things on the sheet that the township had in later minutes that we didn't propose to address. Didn't think were necessarily county issues, but it's listed out there too. Okay, so that would be a recommendation for the subdivision agreement for your consideration. And then, back to the other conditions, number three would be a declaration of restriction that restricts lots one, two, four, five, and six from having a home. Four, recording a water system verification. Um, we did get water test results for nitrate, and that is suitable. Number five, we will go forward those highway comments that we received with the plat. And then, look, six, the, and the lot animal unit reduction form is to be completed before a final approval. Okay. So that's what I have for the staff report, and then I've got a, several letters to, um, discuss when we get to the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. And Dan, I think you're representing the applicant, if you can state name and address?
Uh, my name is Dan Crone. My address is 26183 133rd Avenue, East Room, Minnesota. I'm the Lancer Bear of Record, and I've been in front here before, so I'm hoping you know who I am. Um, we did the survey on the project, so I'm here for any questions.
All right, anything you want to add to?
Other than this is a little process to get here, but I do believe we have an application for you that conforms with the ordinance that's in, in black and white, so, yes. But I, I'm well aware we're going to have some discussion on it, so.
All right, very good. Um, well, with that, um, are there any questions by planning commission members for, uh, the applicant rep or staff? I'll get it started, I have one. Um, okay, so help, help me understand, and I'm somewhat clear on this, but obviously plenty fuzzy. So when a, the existing plat, you've got 17 acres, has a couple of building entitlements on it, those are, that, that's put in place in egg zoning to prevent... Those are, that, that's put in place in egg zoning to prevent cluster buildings and stuff from, from popping up all over, right? So, by simply replating, does that diminish that or change it or how? Are these considered accessory buildings so that it's allowed? So it's the, it's a kind of a technicality to be able to add additional structures in an egg zoning district?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's correct, so the zoning, which is A forty, um, the one dwelling unit from forty really just speaks to a dwelling, to a home. So that regulates, the A forty regulates how many homes you can have, if it was our five, for example. One, one, five acres, you could do six lots, and then three could have homes, you know, on seventeen acres still, yep. It regulates the amount of homes, it, it doesn't say you can't split it up for other uses.
Okay, so whether it was replatted or not, you could put up as many buildings as you would want on that, that parcel? If they're accessory structures?
Mr. Chair, on this size of a property, yes, we could, it's over nine and a half acres, so there is not a limit in the number of accessory structures on nine and a half acres.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I can comment a little bit on that from the applicant's standpoint, because we have, this obviously is a different plat than typically we'd see from a residential standpoint, don't disagree. Um, the applicant kinda looked at the idea of, um, storage units and how to facilitate that on the property. There was some interest amongst the, I'm gonna call it lake owners around the lake that wanted some storage unit stuff. So the other option would be to put up what you normally see as a typical storage unit building, that kind of a process. That wasn't executed because it seemed as if the applicant wanted to go this direction because of the interest around the lake. So the idea was the owners that they've been discussing with wanted the idea of having their own shed not attached to a typical storage unit facility. So that's why we have the applicant sitting with, you know, the plat you have in front of you was because of that arrangement, basically. Somebody, future users or landowners wanted their own lot, their own unit, their own building, is basically what it came down to.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Yep. Uh, so is the intent then for these to be storage buildings or a multiple, multiple use?
So the intent for the ordinance is them to be storage units because it clearly states in the subdivision agreement that we can't use them for any other use from a, from a residential or a house stamping? Yes, I would answer that question, is they're, they're accessory structures, yes.
Okay, a, a storage unit wouldn't necessarily have a, a toilet and a sink, I, I wouldn't think so, okay?
That's not necessarily.
I'd have to disagree because with the Board of Adjustments, we've been seeing people, every couple of months, they want a building about this size. So they wanna have water, so they can clean their stuff up and whatever, and they use it as a little shop out there to.
But, but then is it a storage unit anymore?
If you have a car in there and you're gonna fix your old car, you know, you store it there, but it's around with it there.
Sure.
And, so you wanna wash your hands before you go home.
Or go home and wash your hands.
Well, in, in fairness, I, I know where you're coming from because you're thinking about a, a weekend place to hang out and throw a tent up or something along those lines.
Mr. Chair, I guess when I say, when we say storage, you mean, you mean one thing, when you say accessory, you mean something else. So is it a storage or is it accessory?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sberski, you are correct, um, I don't think defining what accessory or storage unit is the object we have here today. Um, Mr. Mossman is correct, I've seen a kind of a change in my twenty-five years of doing this, um, in storage units. Um, and, and I don't know if this is the right term, but I've had developers or different applicants come to me and they call them man caves, I guess you could say. And the difference being, like you're saying, they, they wanna sink and they potentially wanna wash their car, they, they wanna do something of that nature. So I don't know that there's a definite defin- definition difference between storage unit and accessory structure. In this case, we have to go with where the ordinance sits, and those are accessory structures by definition, and that's the application we have in front of us.
Mr. Chair, can I also just point out, in the proposed subdivision agreement language, that would not be allowed.
Yeah, okay, thank you for clarifying that as well. So the sub-agreement language further addresses the concern of, of making it that, thank you. Any other questions right now for the applicant or staff?
Mr. Chair, I got one more. Uh, would, would any type of, of craft sales be available? Let's say a person does welding art and advertises, wants to be opening on the weekend, would that be allowed?
Uh, Mr. Chair, planning commission, that is not allowed on the list that we have included in the subdivision agreement.
Okay, or, or home crafts or something like that?
We discussed that, yeah.
Sorry, Jennifer, you said that wouldn't be allowed per the sub, uh, the?
The drafted subdivision agreement.
Yep, subdivision agreement, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so that's the list of items that is in five A. The uses that we're suggesting could be allowed does not include that type of sale that Commissioner Percy suggested.
And if it wasn't addressed by the subdivision agreement, you would still need to get a CUP to operate any of those?
It would actually be prohibited, is what the language says.
In the sub-agreement, yes, if, if it wasn't for that, you still would have to have another layer, okay. All right, any other questions at this time? Uh, Jennifer, you wanna?
Sure, yeah, that would be, um, panels either mounted on the roof of the building or ground mounted. And we have seen on back lots on lakes before where people have holes and some solar panels and run the wire to their home or to the shed.
So potentially could they have a shed and then all the rest of the square footage could be solar panels?
It would have, solar accessory is solar that's only intended for use on that person, so we have to.
What, what if you were a high-usage?
Yeah.
A person, let's say your equipment?
You know what though?
You have inside there to do whatever your hobby is or whatever.
They still can't go over the seven thousand square feet.
And actually, solar, the, if it's a ground-mounted system, that square footage counts against your eighteen hundred square feet.
It does?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, that's not defined, yeah, no, it just wasn't defined.
Yep, no, good question.
Good. Anything else for the applicant or staff at this time? As we'll go to the public hearing. All right, well with that, we'll open up the public hearing, and I know a couple are here, uh, to speak and we'll, you know, there's not a lot of people here, but we'll try to keep it relatively consolidated. Um, but if you wanna come up and just provide your name and address for record and make your statements.
Hi, my name is Mary Schrammow, and I'm here with my husband Dale Schrammow, and we are lot thirty. We're, um, right, right next to this development area, and so two seven two oh three. Two seven two oh three Hidden Cove Road, so we are starting right there at lot thirty and, um, kinda jumped in there, okay, and, doesn't matter, we're right there. And we have been, um, living there my whole life and Dale his whole life. So, we're very familiar with the drainage pattern that flows through this field, and it is immense. And you have, we submitted the letter from Dale Homuth of the DNR. We submitted, um, his elevations and how much water drains through here, and it was confirmed by the Sauk River watershed. You can have a million gallons of water flow through this field, down to the lake, and it is, according to the Sauk River watershed, very phosphorus laden, heavy shock loading. And we are always gonna be concerned about where's the flow going? I sent you a video, the standpipe has holes along the hole side, so in fact, the drainage is going faster and it's, um, with a larger volume because it's deeper and larger than before, and going, no, there's no filtering. You saw the video and it is a grave concern to us, and it supports that Nikki of the DNR has also suggested, I just received her new copy too, that she would like to review this further and make sure, before things start rolling, that proper drainage is in place, proper filtering is in place for the sake of Big Fish, because that is what is recorded in the two ordinances that they say they're following. Are you monitoring the erosion and drainage patterns of the land? And I'm not sure that that's been addressed. We did speak with Rhonda, and we offered her to buy the whole field and we're very open and express, name your price, Rhonda. We are gonna keep it and set aside, we wanna make sure this drainage pattern is protected. We would go to any degree to try and just make sure, our goal is to make sure the drainage is filtered because for the sake of the lake and that the discharge is filtered and, um, is not impacting this lake any further. And that is our goal, and that is why we sent you those videos, so you could see firsthand the volume and the dark brown shock loading that's all phosphorus to the lake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, um, applicant, do you wanna address any of the, the statements brought up?
Sure, I think we have two topics we can discuss, the first one brought up by Ms. Buckentin, the easements, we can talk about that later. Obviously, the public hearing with Mr. Schrammow, who can deal with the drainage ways. I know Shelley, who had some conversations before this, or some email correspondence, she has some history on that also. Um, there has been some, I, I don't deny that. Um, one of the things that happened with this application at the township level is the applicant did hire a licensed engineer and he addressed, looked at the stormwater here. Um, the application you have in front of you is going to actually improve the, the drainage and the waterways through the system per the report completed by Mr. Schultz. Um, so I guess the first thing I would comment on is, have we looked at this or redressed it? I would say the report in front of you has, and, and obviously significantly says it's improving the situation that's currently there. Um, other than that, I'll, I'll kinda defer to the environmental services on some more topics and we came back to this, but I do, I do believe it has been addressed, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone else here from the public, so, uh, did we have any other records or, uh, Dale, did you wanna add anything? Okay, uh, did we have any letters from, from the public on this one?
Yeah, we do, and I've emailed them out too, so I don't have to read them if you've already read them, I can just mention them.
You can just summarize in essence what they stated.
So, uh, let's see here. We got a letter from Roger and Carol Klopaki that they also live on Hidden Cove Road. They're new to the area and don't have the history, historical knowledge of the water flow claims. Um, but they were relying on the Schultz engineering study that said that the conclusion was that the runoff rates and volumes would be less than existing. Um, no one wants to deteriorate the water quality because of late, considering the engineering report, the proposed plat should not do that. Accordingly, we favor approval of the plat, sincerely, Roger and Carol Klopaki. And there was a letter from Mary and Dale Schrammow, um, which outlines their concerns with the stormwater impact runoff and through that alleyway coming off this property, and so the documentation they supported was sent to you along with those YouTube videos. Then we had a letter from Dave Carlson, who also has property on Hidden Cove Road. And they're pleased that the intent is not to have homes out here. They did note their concerns are the type seven wetland that's in the southwest corner, at the corner of the two roads. They're disappointed the legal protections only require a twenty-five foot setback and has no other buffers like we're prohibiting tree removal, et cetera. Um, they wanna guarantee that there be an increase in buffer protections to safeguard that area. They have concerns about the mature woods and preserving that, um, concerned about the utility easements. Oh, and I did email with Dave about this, um, he was thinking there was a utility easement behind lots four, five, and six. But I explained to him that plat does not propose that, that's a setback line that he was seeing. Um, and then he questioned about the egg zoning, and they hoped it would limit animal units. And then, um, he noted the soil and water terms of plating committee that property owners have an opportunity to work with soil and water to establish some ground cover if they wish, and also noted this is in a vulnerable high groundwater area. So they encouraged the county to engage new and existing owners to encourage beneficial ground cover and treat plantings on the property. So that was simply Dave Carlson for the Era Carlson Living Trust. Had a letter from Chris Heinen, who simply said she's interested in purchasing a lot. And then we got the township correspondence this afternoon and, um, so I reached out to them, they weren't able to make it, none of the supervisors were able to make it today. But they did indicate that the history of the plat coming before them in the spring, um, text about how they repaired the engineering study to be done due to their concern of the impact it could have on the lake, and, um, let's see. So the township is always trying to do everything that it can to improve the land and lakes in the area. We feel the plat is in alignment with that, not only from an environmental perspective, but also from planning and zoning perspective, as it falls in line with an appropriate use for the land that's not currently and will never be able to use for residential development. So that was from the friend Gugemberger, who's a supervisor. And part of their decision was based on the covenants that Rhonda Green is proposing to have on the plat. So that was included in the packet as well. And so, as you know, covenants are not enforced by the county, they're a private matter, but we did incorporate a number of those items into our proposed subdivision agreement. Um, okay, and then the last thing I have was, um, we got revised comments from the DNR at four thirty today, four twenty. Um, so, she, Nikki Blake Bradley commented that, I think I'll just read this one. "Thank you for sending over the preliminary plat and staff memo as well as the report done by the engineer. Um, thank you for also being willing to accept comments up to today for the planning commission meeting this evening to be read into the record. While I did not have time to fully review the plat and other documents, due to the shortened time frame for review and busy work week schedule, I'd like to make the follow. Uh, the future land use under the contractual six point two acres is being allowed for transfer to development. This would be lots five and six. The rest is being a slash real area with natural resource overlay. She asked, what barrier, if any, would it be to changing the zoning and splitting these lots into smaller units in the future? Stormwater runoff to wetlands and public waters must receive pretreatment prior to discharge of the resources. Stormwater runoff flow directions show going to existing wetlands on the property or parcels. Development in this lot has the potential to negatively impact Big Fish from runoff through the natural watershed from lots three through six. Wetlands in lot one could be negatively affected by runoff from the shed placed on or near the steep slope. There is a history with regard to significant direct runoff from this property to Big Fish Lake in the past and the current land management without any impervious surface or pretreatment. A standpipe in a wetland on this lot occurs from the township access to Big Fish Lake allows direct connection to a cover under the township road without time for pretreatment through residence time and or settling in the wetland. The DNR recommends proper stormwater runoff management through stormwater infiltration pond areas to offer pretreatment, a stormwater runoff from the individual lots. Not requiring stormwater management at this time could result in even more impact to the public water resources through the added runoff from the impervious surfaces added now and in future. DNR recommends taming the decision until concerns regarding water quality impacts can be addressed with help and Big Fish Lake. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, Nicola Blake Bradley." That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Um, with that, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Um, I believe Dan had a comment about the easements, did you wanna address it before the hearing's closed?
Oh, you can, you can dress in our efforts, but, uh, go ahead now.
Okay, so a couple of things, um, I'd like to talk about is easements proposed by Sterns Electric, I believe. Um, Sterns Electric is requesting that we basically dedicate side lot lines to easements, as Jen said, six feet to your side, twelve feet total. Um, it, it's, it's not abnormal, I would say, to request that, um, it's not something you'd normally see on a plat, for example, this one, which I don't consider a high residential plat. If it was a residential, residential plat, in my opinion, um, that had done twenty, thirty lots in it, that would definitely be something I would use because the small utilities would then run their utilities along lot lines to back lots and other ways to disperse the easements or utilities throughout the plat. This case is a little different, um, because it's not a residential subdivision, it's, it's obviously a different animal, I guess you could say. Um, and I guess I would propose not to show those, just because what happens with the side yard easements is if they ever need to be vacated at a public level, when it's a township plat, it's a really difficult, it's not as easy as, as a city has. Cities can use as a resolution to vacate easements, and it's a, it's a city council, it's a public agenda, it's relatively simple. When we deal with township related plats, it's not the same, it's, it's a court order, it's a, it's a highly, it's a highly difficult process. So, I guess I'm asking the board, it'd be my opinion, as I would say several of the last plats we worked on, um, in Sterns County, we've only put the easements along the roads, because of the fact that only removing or relocating those easements on lot lines in plats in a township setting is extremely difficult. Meaning, can it be done, yes, but it's just not as easy as, as normal. So in a non-residential setting like this, I propose that we wouldn't show those, yes. That we, my objection, my suggestion to the board.
Thank you, appreciate the comments there. Um, all right, was there anything else, uh, regarding public hearing? Concerned otherwise, a motion would be in order at this time.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right, thank you, Ken. All right, so motion by Ken Second by Mike to close the public, or Sean? Yeah, Mike, the guy that's not here, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
All opposed, all right, public hearing closed. Um, so with that, um, any further discussion on this before we would go to finding a fact?
Mr. Chairman, I got a couple of questions, but most intriguing was Dan, your comment, right at the beginning, you said, "I know that there's gonna be a lot of discussion on this, I'm just curious, how did you know that?"
Oh, we've had several emails from the Environmental Services Department to myself today. Obviously, if you're just, that is here, it's not my first rodeo, I figured there would be some discussion on the stormwater. Obviously, that's something that was been brought up in the last couple of days, that's why I would have made that comment. The sand pipe and this issue has been something that's been around since the early 90s. Ironically, I had discussions with this with my father and other different generational processes on this, that's why it's there. During this plat, the easement that's there and of record already, that's one thing that hasn't been brought up, and I believe it was 2008 when the sand pipe was installed, the county hasn't used it for an area around the sand pipe for any type of maintenance or stormwater stuff, so it's not something that hasn't been looked at or discussed already. Why I said that was because I thought it was going to be a topic of discussion today.
And then just semantics, there's, I've got kind of two, two levels of question. We got emails, Jennifer, all afternoon, and yet you get the letter at 4:30 from DNR, and we didn't get that. So minimum, I'd like to have a copy of that right now as we're discussing it, I know it's up there, but what we got copies of everything, and the semantics of this is really intriguing to me, so that just adds to it, your comment, and now. I recommended approval on the plating committee? You were at the plating committee? All staff was at plating committee? I'm the only public member there? None of this was brought up? None of this was brought up? And so since then, and unfortunately, people had asked to be notified of the meeting, and they were told by staff, I got the email, it won't come up until March, so we have time. Suddenly, residents read about it in the cold spring record thing. And that's when I started getting the calls. I talked to several residents, I talked to two commissioners, I talked to the DNR. So again, I'm just trying to help facilitate semantically, this isn't making sense to me, and Mr. Grohans, right, it was started in the 1990s and I was involved with it back then. I thought it was resolved, quite frankly. So I'm a little perplexed why at plating, this thing come up? So semantically, one, I want a copy of the letter, two, why are we here? And then three, why didn't we get this subdivision agreement at plating committee? This is detailed stuff, and you know, and I'm not specifically asking questions, Joe. I'm making statements. Yep, so I don't understand how we as a planning commission, Mr. Chairman, can now, suddenly now, Commissioner Percy's concerned, suddenly there's not going to be things or whole things. Okay, in plating committee, there was, so if somebody didn't read the public notices in the cold spring record, they wouldn't even know this was going on, even though they asked to be notified of the meeting. And suddenly, we get a letter from DNR at 4:30 that we don't even know about, because the last email I got from her was just like that in my conversation. They didn't get the maps or anything. Well, every time we ask for something from them, we get critical of them because they don't respond. So just semantically, and I'm sure someone can justify all this, but we've been doing this for a long time, I never saw it happen this way. Then, foolish me, I did, when all these questions started coming in, Mr. Grohans, I'm sure you don't know this, I said, why don't we sit down, try to have a meeting with everybody involved and try to sort through some of this, or we can do it right here? Well, that was denied. And so, not by you, but so here we are. So I guess the question is, if we're going to go forward, I've got a bunch of questions in here, but with the DNR, who we hang our hat on, saying, let's get more information. And again, I'm not against, per se, the plat, I'm against semantically now the process of how we got here, because I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I don't have time to absorb this, absorb a letter from the DNR that I haven't even seen, and then try to piece this all together. And again, had this process, in my opinion, worked the way it should have worked, we'd have this detailed discussion at plating, and then we would have had more discussion, we would have had an informal discussion and answered some of those questions that we wouldn't have to go through this. But yet, we find ourselves here. So let's stop there and see what people want to see, and then if we are going to move forward, then I guess I've got a host of, unfortunately, specific questions that now have been raised that I don't have answers for, nor do other people have answers for, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment on that. So you're correct, Mr. Bertram, I was at the same plating review committee as you, the discussions of this stormwater and some of these topics were not brought up there, that is correct, I don't deny that. The application you have in front of you is, I believe, the reason it wasn't discussed there was the county didn't really dictate any of those discussions to happen. Those discussions were concerning the plat itself, the plat conforms with the ordinance the way it stands. So the discussions, I would say, is a different topic, but somewhat tied together, it's obviously the same piece of property, but the discussions of the stormwater and the discussions of the plat may not have been discussed at that time, because that wasn't the topic of the plat itself. That's a different topic, in my opinion. That's why it wasn't brought up until, obviously, brought up in the last couple of days, I guess, but that's why I don't believe that was brought up with the plating review committee, because it wasn't part of the plat itself.
And Mr. Chairman, Dan, I'm not faulting you specifically, but the plating committee, I think everybody knows, they're all technical staff people. So again, these are all people that this is what they do. So I'm the only public member there, and again, everybody's got a different style, but I sure would appreciate somebody saying, well, by the way, remember, this was controversial, this is what brought, and again, probably, well, not probably, I know somebody's going to say, well, you should know that, you know, we're part-time committee people, I know a lot, but I don't know everything, and I'm certainly not going to, so there's two ways to do this, and again, when you don't have answers for somebody, they make them up. And if you don't want to provide information, and suddenly now, all the information's provided, and then we got this, that we just got this afternoon. So there's different ways of doing things, and again, I'm not against it, but I'm totally against the process. I'm a process guy, public notice, engage in the public, having a conversation, and so that's where, that's the first part, so let's have a discussion on that. Is there any flavor to continuing that, that we can absorb this and hear from the DNR? If there isn't, then I've got a whole bunch of other more specific questions. And again, I hope that at some point, we can have a discussion. If nobody else wants to visit, maybe you and I can visit, and we can try to just get to some point to this or something without having to go through this long process.
Mr. Chair, to Jeff's point about the DNR, somebody lit a fire under them, because we got this today. I'm on the board of assistants, I got three things this afternoon, eight minutes apart, so she was spending like eight minutes looking at a thing, and then she'd come back, and her response was almost like this here, and everyone, well, I haven't had time to look at this here, I recommend denial. She just recommended denial without, and she has another three, four days to look at those and recommend, but from, I've been on nine years, we've waited for the DNR to respond sometimes, and they never have had a response, and now, once I got four of them in one day from her, which is really odd, so I don't, I take her with a grain of salt with all of this here stuff here.
So, Mr. Chairman, Ken, is that a bad thing, that somebody lit a fire under a public servant that is supposed to respond and answer questions?
No.
That's a bad thing?
No, but if you read my emails, they're almost all say exactly the same thing.
I don't, I don't have access to that, so I don't know that.
But I read them all, and it's just like, she said exactly the same wording in everyone, until I have time, more time to look at them, we should deny these things. Well, I've waited.
And could it be, Mr. Chairman, could it be that the reason, and I did say that, that we've been critical of the DNR, because they didn't provide comments on other issues, and I asked this question, not to you, I asked this question, could it be because they didn't get the information to respond? See, we're only told, we only know what we're told, and there's got to be a huge trust factor there, but the deadline, when they can submit the comments, that's in her email, has that changed, she's asking? So they didn't get the information, they had a deadline to respond to that information that they didn't get, and then now they're doing what they're doing. So it's a little convoluted, I guess, but if somebody lit a fire under a government servant to get their job done, God bless them, I'm all for that.
I've had personal dealings with the DNR, and I called them for something I did wrong, so you'd think they'd get back. I waited a year and a half for them to respond, and finally, I went and said, you know, we got to resolve this, and me and another person there took care of the problems, so.
Question, Mr. Chairman, would be, just if you don't mind, is the, my last train of thought.
Go to Joe, come back to you. Mr. Chair, my question is with the DNR, just my recollection of being on the board, I don't recall having the DNR making a request to us to table, and us not responding to that, in fact, I don't, I don't recall us doing that, so I don't know why we would not honor the DNR with this request.
Mr. Chair, I have to point out, the thing is, on one hand, somebody's saying, well, they're saying deny this, but no, they're asking for a table. They want to look a little harder at it, it's a little different.
At 4:30, she said to table it, the earlier she had one earlier.
I don't see the letter, I don't know what they said.
Mr. Bertram? Just now, just, I just want to make sure you know you got it.
Where is it?
I just handed it to you.
This one?
Just so you have a copy.
Got it, now we do have it. So do we want to take a five-minute break and read it, or do we want to continue talking? I'd say continue talking. I thought of what I wanted the same, Mr. Chairman, was the REA, the Rural Electric, Sterns Electric, when you talk about not getting responses, and I've told staff this, and I said at the plating on this one, we never hear back from them. I said, when we, remember back in the old days, I don't think anybody's here anymore, we never got comments from the highway? And then I finally said, we're not going to, we would recommend approval with whatever they, and I said, we're not going to do that, no highway comments. Well, then the minute we stopped that, highway suddenly made sure that they had their comments in when we made recommendations. And the same thing I said with Sterns Electric, because on plating, that's a whole point of having plating, and now what Mr. Grohans says on the light, like that makes sense, we didn't have that information at plating. So now we get it thrown our lap, and now he's got to respond to it. And again, that's prepping something, having to make sure the public are notified and everything, that's all part of the process. How do you think that the county board, 90%, 95% of what we do here, the county board puts on their consent agenda, and they never even have to talk about it? Because we're doing our job, but how much of that job should we be doing versus if we do this tonight, and we throw that onto your guys' lap, we're not doing our job? I mean, we're going to make you have a public hearing to get all this.
Exactly, that was going to be my point, because if we've requests from the DNR, and we don't respond to it here, we will respond to it at Portland.
Real quick question for the applicant, based on something Jeff mentioned. If this was going to be in March, is there something that moved it up to bring it on to the agenda for tonight?
I'm not sure, maybe Commissioner Bertram, I don't know, I don't know what March was about.
Mr. Chairman, let me help you. It was an email from the Schrammels to Heidi, saying, when is this going to come up so that we can prepare ourselves for this? And she said, expect a meeting in March, that's when it's going to be brought up and discussed.
March of next year, was it?
Correct. Which, which again, I'm not blaming Heidi, but semantically, and somebody will say, so let me say it before somebody else says it, well, that's why we have the portal and public information. For God's sakes, I hope that we can serve the public, if I specifically ask to be notified of something, if it's a law or not, pay the common courtesy and then notify me, and don't make me read about it in the public paper, you know? So yes, it was properly public notice and everything else, but it's almost, and again, then you start making up your own stories accounts.
Mr. Chair, could we go back? Shelley had information, what's the deal with this standpipe? He was, had way back from the beginning, how come it got put there in the first place?
Mr. Chair, a couple of things. One, everything was noticed, the DNR did get notice, they got their notice in the regular timeframe that they always get their notice in, they were sent the agenda. I had a long email to Nikki previously, she had asked me about getting notice, and I made sure I checked the dates, I checked her all information, she was given that information. I think she's had a lot on her plate lately, as we had a conversation this afternoon, and we all understand how that goes. She asked if she could have additional time from her comments Monday, when her comment is the one that you received, I said, sure, we'll give you more time to look at it. I didn't want her to feel like she didn't have more time. So then she sent it to me this afternoon, and I had a conversation with her. So I wanted to give her every opportunity if she had time to review it, she still didn't feel she had enough time. In relation to past activities that have occurred in the area, the standpipe, there's a wet, there's a wetland that exists on the alleyway. That wetland was altered in vegetation type, so there was lots of controversy about who had control over that alleyway. It was determined by court that the township has regulation over that based on the plat, and the plat said it's an alley, and it was dedicated to the public. So that has been settled, Collegeville Township is the regulatory authority over the alleyway. The standpipe was put in place under an Army Corps of Engineers permit in 2008 after an easement was granted by the Schrammels, because the Schrammels owned that property at that time, and they did it for water control purposes. That was approved by Army Corps under a general permit, Board of Water and Soil Resources, DNR, and MPCA. Subsequent to all of that being done, there have been additional letters and correspondence back and forth related to who has control over what, can we have an environmental assessment worksheet on it? The answer was, no, there wasn't a need for an environmental assessment worksheet, there's lots of process and procedure that have happened in the area. There are no current violations, there haven't been any violations of the Wetland Conservation Act, which would require, a violation essentially would be draining or filling of the wetland. The wetland exists, is it the same form as it was before? The answer is no, and I will say that, and I was there when it was prior to the changing. And subsequent to that, we've had it reviewed, there's been, I'm going to look to Jason, because I want to get it right, a minram? Was there a minram? A minram was done, which is a technical process, to make sure the wetland was still there, the wetland is there, it's a moderate, medium-quality wetland, it still functions, is it the same as it was? No, but it isn't a violation, it's not drained, it's not filled. There was a lot of process. So in 2008, the county had worked with all the entities involved to try to make this a better situation, that's why they put the standpipe in, and currently, there are no outstanding violations in the area, and the question of managing the water runoff is the biggest issue for you in relation to the plat. And I think a lot of those comments were that the township, the reason the township wanted an engineered report is because of a lot of those questions and concerns that had been brought up historically. So I think they were trying to do the best they could, which is why they asked for an engineered report. The county didn't require one because it didn't meet any of our technical thresholds, and we didn't require something of this applicant than we would of any other applicant, so the county didn't require it. However, as a local government authority who adopted the ordinance by reference, they could allow for it, so they did, and that's why the engineering came from the township. So does that help a little bit? We don't have any current violations, no one's disputing that there has been change. A lot of the access was about, it originally was because there were people who were trespassing a lot in that area, because it was wetland, they would walk on the other people's property, so they kind of tried to confine it, and then they had to address the safety issues, and they did some work and alteration, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, one comment on top of Shelley's comments there, that is correct, there's a lot of procedural things, ironically, I was on the Collegeville Township Board for several years, and this discussion was happening then too, I have some history there also. I won't comment on the procedural process of the DNR and their review, obviously, that's not my topic, I guess, but I do want to remind the board that back in 2008, there was an easement recorded, it's in public easement, I think it's in favor of the Sterns County's one of the named items on that easement. So if the DNR review does come back and say something about this area or some kind of need to improve or not, again, I'm not going to comment that, I'm not an engineer, but you do have a public easement to address that. That topic to me, and probably why I didn't bring it up with the plating committee back then, is, in my opinion, is different than what we have in front of us as far as the plat itself, right? The plat itself is the plat itself. The topic of the sand pipe like that is a different stormwater runner. Now, are they tied together somewhat? Yes, I don't disagree with that, but there's avenues in place to deal with that item, in my opinion. There are.
I don't know if it's, either here nor there, I'm curious, do you remember, is that considered a facultative wetland? That particular?
Wetland in the alleyway or in the areas on the plat?
No, this would be not in the alleyway, the areas on the plat. And the classification. No, this would be not in the alleyway. The areas on the plat. And the classification, I didn't know if there's one associated with that. But that's usually seasonally flooded, in essence, facultative.
They're seasonally flooded, I believe, in the areas of the plat. I'd have to look at the delineation to tell you what type they are.
That's okay. I didn't know what kind of classification. We kept track of that.
Well, they're different, because there's a different setback from one to the other. So in the one area of the plat, you'll see, there's a different setback. So this area is different than this area.
Yep.
So based on the type of setback that, for structures, that's why it's being discussed differently. I don't remember the type. Jennifer, do you?
And Mr. Chairman, I think most, we all were out there, and I was part of this in the early nineties. And then, now, again, it's a pipe with holes drilled in it. And that's what's not making, if any one of us on our farm or at our homes wanted to put a pipe, drill holes in it, and put that directly into a lake, we wouldn't be allowed to do. My God, we had a hard time tiling into a stream or into a holding pond. This goes straight into lakes. Okay, well, we can argue that. But Ms. Blake Bradley's specific comment on Monday, November 14th, was, I have not seen the detailed plans. So she may have got notice. But according to her, I don't know, this is what she's saying, I have not seen the detailed plans for this proposed plat, and was not given the opportunity to comment on the plat prior to the notice for the plat going to the planning commission. Now, because somebody lit a firecracker under somebody, dates were extended. Now we can get an email at 4:30 where we normally couldn't. So, again, semantically, that's probably part of the problem. So I guess what we have to decide is, what Joe said and what Sean said, do we continue it and then have a meeting and discuss some of this, or do it at the next meeting, however you want to do it? Or do we go forward? Then I got a bunch of questions.
Cool. And I'm game, one, yeah, one more thing. I mean, I would throw this out there. There's no doubt, I, there's a wetland sensitivity there. I remember it from, I was one of the trespassers back in high school. Probably isn't easy to get on my fishing spot. So I remember.
Statues, statues, limitations is awful.
I didn't know I was private. So anyway, I know, I remember water running in there. I mean, that's obvious. Now, that being said, I honestly don't look at this platting issue as being a water concern. And I know there's back and forth, but if I'm going to look at, okay, is the runoff worse because of this platting than it would be if it stayed zoned as agricultural farm field, tilled up? And the reality is, it's far worse, actually, as a tilled-up farm field than what the provisions would provide here. Now, there's different debate on that, and I'm okay if we take more time to check it out and have others. We have an engineer. We have some comments we're missing. My bigger concern, and this is what, where I think it's appropriate to look at from a planning commission perspective, is this definitely falls within the ordinances being something that's allowed. But I don't know that it falls within the intent that the ordinances are designed to create. I mean, if you look at the reason for having a set amount of building allotments on a plot, this technically falls, and you would have accessory structures if you had an agricultural farm, and you're going to put up another shed. But this is a completely different intent of use. And the precedent that we set, because I haven't seen anything like this yet, it makes perfect sense. If I was one of the people living along the lake there, I would be wanting to buy one of these lots, like tomorrow. I get the demand. The question is, what kind of precedents are we setting? Because the spirit of the ordinance, in my understanding, is to prevent this kind of development. And so that's, to me, the question that we have to figure out, is, is this plotting okay from, or platting okay from that perspective? And maybe I'm the only one that looks at it that way. But I look at it, and it doesn't follow what I see as the spirit of the ordinances.
I'd like to make a comment on that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead. I would disagree completely on that. It does fall within the intent, because it is allowed within the intent of the ordinance the way it is now. The other intent would be, you would rather see us do storage units in a house or in a building setting where you'd normally see a storage garage kind of thing. There's one located adjacent to here, just to the north. It was just approved within the last two years. So I guess you can look at the intent and say, this isn't the intent, but I guess I would disagree, because the ordinance allows it. So that must have some kind of intent there, right? Otherwise, would the applicants or the lake rather see a storage facility here rather than garages? I don't know. I would beg to differ. I would rather see this across mine than a garage.
And that is fair, and I won't deny that. But to counter that, go ahead.
Can I just point out, I know the facility you're talking about to the north is pre-existing, and so they're allowed to expand through a CUP. But that wouldn't be allowed on a egg, like a mini storage, self-service storage is not allowed here.
That was going to be my point. That would have to go through additional permitting, rezoning, if that was to happen. And so that's, again, I get it. And I think this could look nice, but what I'm saying is that it is a loophole. Without a doubt, unless someone can paint it really clear to me that it's not a loophole that we're hitting, that's our decision. Are we okay with that loophole, or not?
See, the thing is here, the problem isn't with the storage, with the buildings. The problem is pre-existing, and it's going to exist if we approve this or don't approve this. There's still going to be the water running off the land.
That's my point. The water, to some degree, is a moot issue, because I don't know that replating it is going to change the runoff that exists. It actually improves it. My deal is, the replating is a loophole in the ordinance to try to prevent cluster development on single parcels of egg property. I mean, it should either be rezoned, or, this is my opinion, just throwing it out there. That's why you have zoning, is to rezone it to then plat it to fit this.
I'll comment on that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead.
The rezone was an option, and something that was denied by the local unit. The township didn't want to rezone. They didn't want to see units that way here. They wanted to see this, because this is something that they approve. So I disagree with you again. Yes, we could go through an option, rezone, and could go another option. But that's not, that's not an option, because they denied that, or they didn't want to see that. The local unit said, this is, and actually Craig's letter today, I believe he said, this is something we kind of wanted to see in the area. So I guess, there was options looked at that were different than this that you have in front of you, and it's abnormal. I don't disagree with that. But it's something that falls within the ordinance, yes.
Mr. Chairman, and that was part of it, too, is I wanted the township at the meeting that we could have those discussions, that we could hear from the township, exactly what is it that, you know, their memory is or whatever. And again, we were denied that. But the, when you say it's no different, I disrespectfully.
You respectfully disagree.
No, I respectfully disagree. In that, when you've got a nine-acre field, and it's grassland and everything else, it's going to, you know, it's going to, you know, it's going to settle in. Whereas if you've got roofs, you've got the water running off all these roofs, it's going to run faster, and it's going to run, there's going to be cement aprons, if I remember right. There's a potential for other things that are going on. So the sensitivity of it is, is more. And then the, and again, Dan made a good point. He said, but the buyers really wanted these individual garages. You know what? I've got buyers left and right that want to be 50 foot from a lake. And I've got buyers that want to be right on the property line. I got, I got people that would like to build a house within 100 feet of a feedlot, because they farm the farm, and they want to build. So we don't dictate by what buyers or landowners, we go by the ordinance.
By the ordinance, which this allows.
And I think, again, you both have a good point, but I agree with Jason. But again, do we want to go through all this, or do we want to just give it some time to let this all settle, which I think would be the best for everybody? But I'm too practical.
I'll comment. What would it hurt to continue this and have the input of the DNR and be able to sit down and have those discussions? And maybe we can, through all of that, reduce the chance of potential flooding because of runoff. Maybe there can be retention areas incorporated into the plat. Obviously, everything is draining towards the lake naturally. And when the road was put in years ago, that kind of created a dam, and it also created some of the wetland areas that we're dealing with now in the drainage and having that standpipe for drainage. All of that is man-made problems. But this is probably an opportunity right now to take a look at it, get all the input from all the parties, and maybe we can engineer something that would help alleviate the situation. I'm just saying, let's take a deep breath, get all of our ducks in order before we make a final decision.
Well, Rich, so here for continuation, Jeff, I know, is, Sean, and Ken, I guess I'll look to you, being that.
I would go right along with that. I agree with that. We need to get our ducks in a row and gather our information.
Okay. Ken, right now, we're already outnumbered, and I don't know, I'm probably on that board, too. I'd actually be curious to hear more from the township on it. Because I look at it as a loophole, to the point, maybe it is the proper way to do it. There might not be a better zoning, if they actually want something like this.
If you're asking me to entertain a table, and because of stormwater plans, we have a licensed engineer by the state of Minnesota that says, what we have in front of you is actually improving it. You have a public easement around the area in concern, that if it was an issue, you as a public entity, Stearns County in particular, can go and fix it. So if it was an issue, before we even discussed it today, you have an option to do that, but nobody's did that yet. And we have a plan in front of you, where an engineer is saying it actually is improving it at this point. This application is improving. And now you're going to say here, well, we want to look at more things to see if we can find a way to improve it. We have that in front of us.
We just got all this information this afternoon, in late afternoon?
I understand that. The procedural process, I'm not going to disagree.
We don't want to make a move that quick. I don't.
Make a move that quick because of, you're going to gather information from the DNR? Or I guess, I don't know what information's going to be supplied, I guess.
Public hearing is close, isn't it?
Yeah, well, this would be the applicant, yep. So, yeah, it sounds like we just need a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. What's that? Yep, okay.
Chair, would you reopen the public hearing or not? We did close the public hearing, so reconvene, will you allow testimony?
Well, I, would the township be considered public testimony at that point? They would, so I would say yes.
And then we could just reopen it, just so that we know formally that we're going to allow the reopen.
Yep. Yep. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I was going to comment. One option would be to continue it, to receive input from the township and the DNR.
Yeah, and that's probably a better suggestion.
So either way.
I would agree with that, because there's a, I hesitate to reopen the public hearing at this point, in some ways, but I also want those comments as well. Because I didn't, I wasn't privy to that part of it.
The township's already made comment. They approved it.
They approved it, but why didn't they, what I don't know is why they didn't rezone it. Again, I still look at it as being a bit of a gray area, and I get it's technically allowed. As a planning commission, I question if it's the right thing to do. I don't think that the ordinance was set up with this scenario in mind.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, I don't doubt the township wouldn't mind attending the meeting. They were, Craig was planning on attending tonight, and then something came up, so obviously he wasn't here.
Mr. Chairman, as far as the public input goes, obviously, when we digest this, everybody gets to digest this. And somebody's got additional comments. I don't know what it hurts to have people comment on now, information we just got. But that's your call. You never can, Mr. Commissioner Lenzweiler would always say, listen to them for five minutes and then cut it off. When he was the county board, and I said, Lee, we're going to hear from everybody. We're going to try to limit it, but we can't ever get too much public information, in my opinion, and then, you know, whatever. But that's your call.
That's a fair point, too. What I don't want to do, though, is to keep going down the, I don't want to hear the same comments regarding the same issues, if they.
That's a good, and so maybe we can just keep limited to the information that we got today and the DNR tonight.
Yep.
So maybe limited to that. I mean, at least allow some public input, I would suggest.
Okay. Does that have to then, and I don't know, it's procedurally, does that have to go as part of the motion, as far as what we'd allow public testimony on?
Yep, if you want to reopen a public hearing, yep.
So in that case, what I would be hearing, and I'll go to the people that made the motion, would that be, what would that be regarding then, if we are going to open it to the public hearing, or do you want to not do that at all?
I have no problem with the public having input.
On the subdivision agreement, do you care any more about public testimony regarding the water runoff, being that it's been addressed outside of the DNR comments?
I would like to have the DNR have enough time to respond. What would they propose to, whatever, what the concerns are listed in her letter here?
Okay. So, okay, so let me try to phrase this, and if someone else wants to do this differently, let me know, from a language standpoint. So we will reopen up public comment period, as it pertains to the subdivision agreement. And then we definitely want to hear from the DNR and the township, and.
My question is, will the township get the information that the DNR will share with the county?
Say that again?
Will the township get the same information that we are going to get from the, okay. Okay. So then they could, they could comment at that time also.
Okay.
Are we continuing it to December?
Yeah.
Okay.
We would continue to December. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to belabor this thing for a real long time. I mean, that seems like sufficient time to continue it. All right, so, motion made by Rich, seconded by Sean. All's in favor to continue? Say aye?
Aye.
All's opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
And that meeting for the Schrammels purposes will be December 15.
Mr. Chair, I got a couple of questions for clarification. On the items about recreational vehicle, okay, the township says, each property owner shall be permitted to keep on their property one recreational vehicle.
I guess the word keep means, is rather ambiguous to me.
Yep. Yeah, the intention, our thought was limited to, and I actually would like to add a word, essential services, fences, licensed motor vehicle, recreational vehicle, or watercraft storage. That was, our thought was just to store it there, not that it could be used.
And that, I think that needs to be clarified, yeah. So on that property, would they, the landowner, would they be allowed to park the recreational vehicle and use it?
Or storage.
Only inside of the building.
Okay, right.
See, that's, everything should be, everything should be inside of the building. There should be no outside storage.
Well, the other thing, I guess, if my neighbor has an RV, and I've got an RV, and you put it inside, I don't know what it is to the public, if there's two sitting inside and they're not being used. Okay?
Right.
So just, in case this doesn't come back up now, which way is what Kent said, or what you're saying?
Well, that, we'll propose what we're proposing, and then you guys can change it if you want.
It's kind of wide open right now. That's what, that's what they're saying.
Well, but Kent said inside, which would be obviously less of a concern.
And that's what wording says.
Okay, so it's the way you said, not the way Kent said.
That's what we're proposing.
Got it.
Yep.
It's the way it's read is why Joe was seeing it, that they could park it there and camp in it.
And I could see.
Living it, right.
Holiday weekends, you know, is this someplace where the extended family might come up and park and do that?
So that's another thing we got to clean a hash out of.
Yeah. We've been down that road before. And then one other, Mr. Chair, one other question, Jennifer. Will each of these lots be, have a separate 911 number? So will they be identified so that they'll have?
Yeah, they certainly can each request an address, yep.
Request one, or will they be given?
It, so the auditor's process, auditor's.
So, the auditor's process, auditor's office process is not to automatically sign it. They do it upon request.
Okay.
That's their process.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the conditions...
Yes.
The conditions were listed, and then there was like four or five of them from the township that weren't part of the conditions. I mean, this is a township recommend, wouldn't it just make sense that it's like, everything's in one place, that these are the conditions? Does it really matter if it's from the township, or if it's from the county? Just would make it easier for everybody, the new owners of the property and everybody, that all the conditions are listed for either entity? And you could even identify saying, these are the county conditions, these are the township conditions. But I mean, because this is their condition.
Yeah.
We, if the county were to include these in the subdivision agreement, then we're obligated to enforce it. It's not something we've historically enforced, is architectural controls. That's always been a private covenant thing, so I would hesitate to start getting into that, but...
Could you reference that there's a covenant?
We could.
Because again, if I'm somebody that's buying this, that I don't know anything about all this controversy and concern, I don't know that. Now, if I'm reading something, I see, well, there's a covenant. Again, if the dissemination of information continues like this, somebody would not even know there's a covenant.
Yeah.
And the more we can make all that information available, in my opinion, the better.
Yeah, we could cross-reference. I think that would work.
Yep.
Yeah. We're not enforcing the material they use to build it, you know, that kind of thing.
Yep. Good suggestion. All right. With that, let's go to agenda item number three, and that's the minutes from the October meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the minutes says that you opened the meeting and everything else, and it says Chair Blackburn performed a roll call. Probably should correct that to Chair Crowe.
I thought Sean might have been acting as chair, probably do a better job.
I'll move the minutes with the, with the correction.
Thank you. All right. Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rich, to approve the October minutes with that correction. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? All right. Then the last item of discussion, I know Joe, Jeff, you had both brought this up regarding changes to the districts, and how that impacts appointing of Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment members, Board of Adjustment members, and looking for some feedback from individuals in this group regarding that.
You might want to share, Commissioner Persky, I'm sure most members don't know what this is about.
Shelley, first of all, while shuffling with new appointments, with our district changing, and also with people moving on and off the board, what does, what does that look like for that, the board right now?
Okay, so, as we stand, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, Ken is finishing his third and final term, so he will have his last meeting next month. So that is a district appointment, and because he was District Four and would be in District Three, it doesn't matter anymore, because we'll have a new appointment that needs to come from somewhere. Jeff is moving from planning commission, he will be, he's an at-large member, he will be county board, so that will leave an at-large position open if the board continues to do that system, which is district and at-large. Sean is actually up for appointment. He's filled two terms, has a third term he could fill, but is currently living, in today's world, District Four, but will become, no, District Two, but will become District Four. So there's a, that's a different question. The Board of Commissioners, I brought them several options, one, they could make everybody all at-large members, they could do appointments, they could look at it differently, they could appoint by district and have the two at-large and one at-large at the planning Board of Adjustment, or we could have appointment areas that would distribute a little bit differently, they would cross district lines, so there's some options that I brought forward. One thing that was very clear is if there was a current person serving in a district that they, that changed, they wanted those persons to continue serving throughout that term. So if you were in year two, you could finish your third year, or year one, you could do until the end of the third year. And then it would be reconsideration of those terms. So that shuffling could occur at that time. It depends on which model they use, they're considering different approaches.
Considering different things. No, Sean could continue, but he would continue, but he would go to District Four, correct? If he was to continue?
He would be under District Four if he would be reappointed and they keep a district system, yes.
So then that would vacate one in District Two?
Correct.
Okay. And then Jason, you're in which district?
He's in District One, that's District Three, that's Jason's District One.
Okay, okay, yeah. You're District Three?
Yep.
And you're District One?
And we would need a District Four, and then there's an at-large position as well.
Oh, and then, and Mike's from District Five?
Correct, that stays.
Which meets, which meets...
Right, he could be Four, but again, we would have...
Which meets Commissioner Lenzmeyer's, the one that brought it up, that he wants people to fill out to serve, and you're in Commissioner Lenzmeyer's district now, so that's taken care of. That's not an open, unless you're not going to reapply.
No, it's, he has to reapply, but it would, he could be reappointed into that district as District Four, yes. But then it leaves two open.
Right.
Yes. And an at-large position open, because Rich is at-large.
Shelley, can you explain the issue with municipalities and how that works?
Okay, so, by statute, the county planning commission is required to have at least two members living in unincorporated areas of the county. That is our current, where we sit at the current threshold, is two. That would be Jason and Mike. Everybody else lives in the city.
Yeah.
Your right threshold, I'm glad we didn't go the other direction.
Mr. Chairman, what makes that odd is St. Augusta and Rockville are townships, but are cities.
Correct.
So, and it's a state statute.
Correct.
I mean, obviously, AMC is involved with everything. I can't imagine how this works in the bigger, more rural districts or whatever. But there was a suggestion by Commissioner Lenzmeyer that they should wait, make the change. Don't know how much of a flavor there is to that, but, so in case I don't get my say in this, I'm an old farm boy, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. My concern is, there's two commissioners that will never have anybody come before us, because everything goes through the city of St. Cloud. So potentially, if we do all at-large, potentially, two commissioners could have a say in who seven members would be. Well, the nice thing that this has worked, and I served on it for 15 years in two different stints, is we clearly were evenly divided. We, you know, the rural, Commissioner Knox's district, Commissioner Addy's district before him, you know, they had their member, and everybody had their member, and, you know, Commissioner Persky and Sartell and Wade Park, that's a very unique, he's got his member, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Lenzmeyer, even though they won't have anybody potentially in front of us, they have their member, and then of course, at-large could be, that's where you can really add it if you want to. So, my position is, if it isn't broke, don't fix it. It seems to have been working well, and even representation. The statute part about the cities or the township, especially with Rockville and St. Augusta, I mean, it's something that AMC maybe should look at, and making it, again, how much do you want to regulate from the top down, if it works?
See, that's kind of how I got on when Lee was in, he appointed me because I was in St. Augusta, but I'm rural, St. Augusta, which 95% of it is rural.
Yeah. Well, I like, the part I like about staying with the appointment based on the commissioners that, it stays the closest to that old concept of representative republic. I mean, if people are electing an official, now you would, you'd expect their interest to then be represented by their appointee to a degree. I mean, that, that's the closest in the representation, and assures that you're keeping some of that rural perspective included. So I like that, that part of it. So I think there was a couple of options listed, one of them was based on geography, which helps deal with that, too, but then you got crossed lines, and it gets kind of messy and hairy that way, so, I don't know, I tend to agree, just kind of stick with the current process. It'd be more convenient to go just all at-large, I mean, that's a convenience thing, I get.
You'd also keep all applicants viable every year, so that if you get nine or 10 applicants in one year, it's not, oh, just District Three is open, or just District Two is open, and, and it allows all those applications to stay in play. That's the reason I looked at it.
Fair statement, it provides for flexibility, without a doubt, and, and there's some ease to that. You lose a little bit of the representation of rural, potentially, if that's the case.
And Mr. Chairman, the thing we haven't talked about is, this is, at least, again, in my 15 years, this has never been made political. But now, if there's certain agendas that board members could have, so they would say, okay, that person's against solar or for solar. So we started appointing at-large members to meet a political agenda, which, boy, that really gets dicey. I know that each of us, I was appointed, you were appointed, very specifically by Commissioner Addy, you know, listen to the people, advocate for the people, and, you know, Jeff wanted you to do that. So, everybody's appointed for a different reason, but if you start doing the at-large, and you allow potentially one or two more outgoing commissioners to make those appointments, it could be made on, or even stamp, it could be made on, you know, well, they're for it or against that issue, and this, short-term rentals, and do we really want to make that political? And that, in my opinion, would increase that potential of making it more political, if you want to call it that. Where if a commissioner appoints, well, each commissioner, then, if they do want to make a political appointment, they can do it individually, it'll happen five different ways, not in groups.
Any other opinions from any of the other members on this one?
So just being the representative from St. Cloud, we may never have something from St. Cloud come before the planning commission, but the people of St. Cloud have a tremendous interest in what happens here. So, for example, when you talk about the Sauk River, the Sauk River is a quarter mile from my house. So if something happens upstream of the Sauk River, St. Cloud cares. So, you have yet to build a wall around St. Cloud to keep us out?
And you're, and you're representing.
And that's why I would like to see it stay in the commissioner's district, because then there will always be two from the metro St. Cloud area, but it won't be a majority.
Well, and, and that's the point, because to Jason, you guys should, there should be representation from the city of St. Cloud, the biggest population center. Yep. It just has to be...
And that's my point, each district should have one, but no one district should have seven of them. And that potential is there.
Exactly.
It wouldn't be right if the fifth district had seven, or the third district, or the first district.
Exactly.
And that, if we do something different than what we're doing now, that potential is real.
Yep.
So I agree, every district should be represented, and then the at-large, potentially, well, not potentially, two districts will have two members.
Large members don't, all of the commissioners have to agree on?
Yes.
So...
But right now, District One's got two members, Rich and Jason.
Which is fine.
Yeah, absolutely. So, St. Cloud, certainly there is no wall, it is open, you got two of them.
It could still get hard to, for one district to get seven, because all the commissioners are still going to do their job and say, no, you can't have all of them.
The way we do it now.
Well, even if you had all at-large, you'd argue that you couldn't, you can't, you wouldn't allow that, Jeff. I know you wouldn't, Joe wouldn't want it either.
I wouldn't, but another one would.
Oh.
And again, it's a majority, should we, I, I'd say we should make a recommendation.
One small tweak, and I'm going to ask you, the board, would you think, what would you think of moving it to three non-municipal members? Does that help?
What can we do then, if it's a statute?
You can change the ordinance to provide for that.
That there has to be at least three non-municipal board members here.
You can make a change to the ordinance for planning commission.
There's only two, you only have to have two, right?
Yes.
Do you think it, do you think it would make it better if we had three?
I, I don't know that it would make it better. It's a fair question.
A minimum of three, it doesn't mean you, you could have four, you could have five.
With St. Augusta and Rockville in the mix, it's less of an issue, in my opinion. Because again, it skews what we consider, you know, Pinzels, Pinzel, Rockville's, Rock...
Well, you even get Sartell and St. Stephen's. Sartell, or St. Stephen's starts a mile out of what is the town, so it's a huge...
Yeah. No, it's a, it's a fair question, Joe. I like the question, I just don't know that it is necessary here, or make a difference. Seems like it. Considering the dynamics of the county today, yeah, in my opinion, but others have differences.
I think it would be helpful to the board, Mr. Chairman, if we made a recommendation that Joe could take back, either officially, or just, or do you get, do you get the flavor of what we talked about?
I would, I would prefer just to take, take your feedback from what you heard tonight.
So you heard what you heard.
Yeah.
So I'm asking, are there any constructive changes to doing what's initially, or what we're doing now, or do we keep status quo?
Another good question. I don't have anything off the top of my head that would, would be a suggestion for improvement. There, there might be some, I just can't think of any.
You could try to get better-looking members.
That's a fair, that's a fair statement, yeah. Well, I mean...
Get improved when, when I leave, Ken leaves.
Yeah, I, I think there's always room for improvement.
It's going to be a long path here.
I think there's always room for improvement, and, and I would say that with, with the employees and everything, obviously, the broader perspective that we can have represented within the planning commission, I think the better overall decisions are going to be made. So, having, having broad, diverse perspectives is always a goal and a good thing.
What I, what I like about the commissioner's appointments is that the commissioner was elected because of personal views, and they can put a person that's on there. So if I'm a strong solar person, okay, if there, if it's, if there's four people that are against, or three to two, the rest of the board can keep the solar issue out of there, because I'll put somebody that's there.
So then you are bringing it political.
No, but it's, it's, but to a degree, that's the way it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be representing the people that are...
Jeff was saying, we shouldn't be political, but I agree with Joe, that's the way it should be, but you are bringing your agenda, I call it. I just call it an agenda, and everybody has that.
Can I say, it shouldn't be political in an at-large, where potentially one or two commissioners could control all of them. If it's, if it is political, it's individual.
Right.
Anything else?
All right.
On that?
No, no, thank you for bringing it up and asking. All right, so are there any other discussion items outside of that one?
Move to adjourn.
All right, motion made to adjourn by Rich, any seconds?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sean. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned. Or, meeting adjourned, I'm sorry. Yes?[1673.46]